You'll get one of these. These are all your future, these are our. So you got City Council Planning Commission. Yeah, about two months ahead.
Yeah, this is on you.
All right. Call to order to the March 6th, 2025 City Newport Beach Planning Commission meeting. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to recognize our new Commissioner. Commissioner Reed, would you, Commissioner, if you'd like to make any kind of introduction?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Rosin. Name is Greg Reed. I've been a resident, been lucky enough to be a resident of the city of Newport Beach for 20 years. Had a career in apartments, particularly multifamily, both on the financing side and the development side. And I am blessed to have four daughters under the age of 10. So.
Wow.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Glad to have you. So, moving on, why don't we go ahead for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Elmore, would you be, lead us in the pledge? All right, staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Great. Next item is public comments. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, but that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items this evening? Okay. Seeing none. We will move on to the next item. That is request for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
We have no requests for continuances.
Great, thank you. So, moving on to consent items. Item number one is the minutes of the January 23rd, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on the minutes from January 23rd? Mosher.
Chair Rosin, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. You may have noticed I didn't suggest any edits to the minutes because I did read them, but I didn't see anything that was factually in error. I did want to comment, however, that they seem, maybe it's just me, a little sketchier than in the past, and without reference to the video, people would not really know what happened at the Planning Commission meeting. A minor point, but on item two, it just makes a general comment that Commissioners disclosed ex parte communications. In the past, I thought they usually said which Commissioners disclosed what. And more significantly, on item number three, which you may recall was amendments to the housing overlays, kind of similar to the item you're hearing tonight. The motion just says approve as recommended, which usually means the staff recommendation, but in this case Commissioners were adding something about two properties, and only one of the two properties is even remotely identified in the minutes. And exactly what was approved about those two properties is not mentioned at all in the minutes. So, there is nothing factually wrong with them.
Okay, staff. Then, we get a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve without any comments.
I'll second.
All right, call for vote.
The motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Reed abstaining.
All right, next item is your public hearing items. Item number two is Palm and Olive. This is PA 2024-0088. The site location is 325 Old Newport Boulevard, Suite 1. Staff, do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Thank you, Chair Rosin. Oscar Orozco, Associate Planner here with the Planning Division, presenting Planning Application Number PA 2024-0088. This is for the Palm and Olive Restaurant Conditional Use Permit. The site is located at 325 Old Newport Boulevard, as depicted here in this vicinity map. The restaurant is an existing restaurant located on the first floor of this two-story multi-tenant commercial building, as depicted or illustrated in this image here. The project site is located within the Office General Zoning District and is abutting properties that are also within the Office General Zoning District to the north and the east. To the south, there is a public parking lot located in the public right-of-way. And across Newport Boulevard to the west is the zoning district PC 38, which is Hoag Hospital. Notably, there are zoning districts specifically for residential within the vicinity. These, however, are at the closest point over 200 feet away from the project site and buffered by an existing series of properties zoned office general between both the project site and the residential zoning districts. Just some brief history on the entitlements for the restaurant at this location. Palm and Olive currently operates under the most recent use permit in 2006. However, the original use permit for a restaurant at this location was approved in 1998, specifically approving a restaurant and waiving seven parking spaces, which is what was required of the restaurant at the time, given that the property does not provide any onsite parking. Therefore, all of the parking was waived when it was initially approved. There have been some changes and amendments over time. For instance, the addition of a outdoor dining patio was approved subsequent to that original use permit, as well as an amendment in 2003, specifically authorizing alcohol as part of their operations and changing the hours of operation to allow for late hours, which was midnight on a daily basis for the interior portion. More recently, in 2006, there was a Planning Director's Use Permit that was approved, which increased the size of the restaurant from 650 square feet to approximately 1,500 square feet. It upped the total amount of seats from 20 to 24, and it then revised the hours of operation to a 10:00 p.m. closure time on a daily basis. Specifically, that use permit had a condition of approval that prohibited the sale of alcohol as part of the use permit. This table is intended to show the existing operations and really the changes that are being proposed as part of this application. The existing restaurant, which operates under the most recent use permit in 2006, is not proposing to change anything associated with the gross floor area, both to the interior and the exterior. The seat count, both interior and outdoor, are to remain the same. The hours of operation are from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily, which includes the outdoor dining patio, which is consistent with the previous use permits. And while the existing use permit does not authorize live entertainment or dining, the applicant is not proposing to change that. Therefore, that is not a component of their project. The one item that is changing is the applicant is requesting a Type 41 On Sale Beer and Wine ABC License, which is a difference from the previous. The project has been reviewed by the Police Department, and the Police Department is in support of the alcohol license request. They have specifically included conditions of approval that have been incorporated into the resolution to support the request. Again, the conditional use permit, just to reiterate, is specifically for a Type 41 alcohol license, which typically is a request that only requires a minor use permit, and the review authority is the zoning administrator. So, in this particular case, while they're not requesting any late hours or any other triggers that would bump them up to CUP, there is an existing historical parking waiver that currently requires a conditional use permit to be waived. So, through this application, the applicant is requesting to reconfirm or reauthorize that existing parking waiver that was originally granted as part of the original use permit. I would like to note that the operational characteristics, the size, and all the items associated with the intensity of the use are not changing. Therefore, there's no specific one item that's requiring there to be more spaces from the original seven to the current 18. However, due to parking code changes from 1998 to present day, the total parking spaces are more than previously required. Just to illustrate a little bit more, here's an aerial image of the site. The restaurant is located within those red lines, which is the property line, and no onsite parking is provided. The green boundary there with the green dash is the existing public parking lot that's located within the public right-of-way that's serving public use. Notably, as part of this 42-space parking lot, the original use permit required an encroachment agreement to include four spaces specifically allocated to the restaurant use, and that's depicted here, closest to the entrance of the restaurant. That is proposed to continue to remain as a condition of approval for this conditional use permit. Briefly, I'd like to just mention, there's a proposed, or I'm proposing a revision to fact five in support of finding G, specifically just to revise the condition of approval that's referencing that encroachment agreement. There's just a minor typo where it reads condition of approval number three. It should read condition of approval number five, and this is also cited in the staff report. So, just to make the clarification that it's supposed to be condition of approval number five. And with that being said, staff recommends approval of the application to adopt the resolution as proposed to be revised for the approval of the conditional use permit. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also available for questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Mr. Langford?
Thank you, Chair Rosin. Thank you, Mr. Orozco. My question is about condition number two, and it's about the time. It says hours of operation shall be between 11:00 and 10:00, and then it also talks about not having late hours after 11:00. And I think the current hours are up to 9:00 p.m. So, I just wanted to see if we could write this in a way that isn't as, to my reading, there's, it almost says like, it shall be open till 10:00, and then it talks about 11:00. So, to me, it's a little confusing. I just wanted to see what your try, like, what your intention is supposed to be here. Like, are we going to 10:00, or do we want it to be no later than 11:00? Or?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Langford. I think in looking at condition number two and number three, we can actually just combine the two, and we can revise it to say that hours of operation for the indoor and outdoor dining areas shall be limited between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. daily. I think that'll suffice for the condition.
Okay. Yeah, I think adding the word limited would be helpful, so it's not requiring them to be open until a certain time, because I don't think they intend to be open till 10:00. And then not having anything, not referencing 11:00 would be helpful, probably.
Incorrect. It's really intended to just provide flexibility in case they choose to operate later, and I think those are appropriate hours.
Okay. All right, thanks. My second question relating to condition number five, it's about the encroachment agreement. So, is this an encroachment agreement with the city, or is it OCTA? Who owns that land, and how long is their agreement for?
I believe that there's an existing encroachment agreement with the city, and so that would be between the city and the applicant here.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there any other Commissioner questions of staff? I actually have one quick question, and this is only just real briefly. The previous 2006 approval, you just mentioned that there was a condition of approval prohibiting the sale of alcohol. Is that just because they never applied for a Type 41, or is there a specific reason?
It's not clear in looking at the record. We think maybe because they were requesting to increase the size of the restaurant, and it wasn't something they were looking for, that that was.
It wasn't a specific reason.
To give it up.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any ex parte communications, starting on the left? Commissioner Reed?
No.
None for me?
None.
None.
None for me.
None.
None.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearings. The applicant wish to make a presentation? The applicant present. Could you just please come forward? If you don't have a presentation, have you reviewed the conditions of approval, and do you agree with that?
Yes, I did, and I agree with that, yes.
Okay, and we have the staff changes that we incorporate in them as well. Is there any Commissioner questions? Mr. Harris?
Just a clarification on Commissioner Langford's, the hours. Is the intention at the 10:00 p.m. to, would be the last time you could admit customers and then have the flexibility before you had to actually shut your doors at 11:00?
Yes.
Is that the intention?
That's the intention, yes.
That's what I figured. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Oscar, for the helping us and working hard on this case. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Does anyone from the audience wish to speak on this item?
Chair Rosin, members of the Commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. That sounded slightly inconsistent with the wording that we just heard, proposed, I believe. The only comment I wanted to make, which is kind of similar to my comment about the minutes and wanting to maintain clarity of action, I, in reading this, I just noticed the resolution, starting on handwritten page 17, says it is a resolution to approve a conditional use permit and alcohol license and waiver of parking. But when you get to handwritten page 26, it is actually saying what the commission action is. On handwritten page 26, number one action is the Planning Commission hereby finds the project exempt from SEQA. Number two is that the resolution supersedes the previous use permit, but usually between those two, there would be a statement actually that the commission hereby approves the new use permit, and I don't see a statement that you're actually approving it. So, I don't know if that was inadvertently left out, or it's a new style. Thank you.
Mr. Mosher, is there any other comments? Public comments? Okay. Thank you. Then, I take it that the applicant doesn't wish to respond on that. We'll go ahead and ask staff for clarification.
Yes, Mr. Mosher did point out, we inadvertently left out a provision that says the Planning Commission hereby approves conditional use permit with the number. So, we'll add that in the final resolution.
Okay. Sounds good. Then, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for discussion and action. Commissioners, any comments?
I think this is a relatively straightforward application. I'm willing to make a motion to approve, and then in the conditions, or make the clarification that the idea, the intent is to close, end operations at 11:00 with people with last, you know, last patron coming in at 10:00 o'clock.
Okay.
I'll second.
Excellent. May I, we'll call for a vote?
Motion is second.
Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant.
Congrats.
Our next item is item number three. This is North Newport Center Planned Community PC 56 Amendments. This is PA 2024-0173. Site location is various locations in North Newport Center Planned Community PC 56 and the 100 and 190 Newport Center Drive area. Staff, do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Chair, I think we have a.
Oh, excuse me. I think we have some recusals this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need to recuse myself on this item due to property interests that my employer partially owns in proximity to the planned community in question.
You?
Chair Rosin, I also need to recuse myself. I lease property at the 600 Newport Center, and this project could have an inverse, adverse impact on the leasehold interest.
Thank you. Hey, staff. Please proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, Chair Rosin and Planning Commissioners. I'm Liz West-Morland with the Planning Division. This project is the North Newport Center Planned Community Amendments. So, first, I'd like to walk you through the background of how we got here tonight. So, first, showing you an aerial view of Newport Center. So, this is generally what we consider to be Newport Center, and it's anchored by Fashion Island in the center. So, we have Fashion Island in the middle with the Ring Road or Newport Center Drive that wraps around Fashion Island, and then there's several different blocks that surround it. This is the North Newport Center Planned Community as it exists today. So, all of the properties in yellow are located in the planned community and controlled by the Irvine Company. So, this is a relatively unique planned community, and that it is a true planned community. It has all of the complete elements that would be included in a community, such as opportunities for recreation, entertainment, shopping, and also residential, as well as some areas for employment. Going into housing element implementation, a critical part of this project. So, back in 2022, the state certified the city's housing element, and as part of that, we allocated a certain number of units to Newport Center. That was a focus area of the housing element. And then, in late last year, the City Council adopted rezoning. So, we actually implemented these housing opportunity sites through zoning, and that was called our Housing Opportunity Overlay Zoning Districts. And Newport Center is one of them, and that's HO4. And so, what this means is that for properties that are located in the overlay zoning district, you can build residential projects regardless of the underlying zoning or general plan designation, as long as you meet the development standards and a couple other criteria. And a couple really important ones are the density range. So, making sure that the projects are between 20 and 50 dwelling units an acre. And then, there is a maximum cap for Newport Center, which is 2,439 dwelling units. Here's a view of the overlay, and so these are sites that are located within the housing overlay. And as I mentioned, projects can be built here with a, with a site development review with the Planning Commission. So, that brings us to the proposed amendments today. The Irvine Company, the applicant, is seeking to allocate 1,500 dwelling units from those housing overlays and put them into the planned community that's been existence since 2007. And so, what this does is it means that instead of being subject to the default zoning regulations of that overlay, they would be subject to the planned community regulations in terms of design and development standards and other features. So, the planned community text has been amended to ensure that the allowed uses reflect the overlay. So, there's a few blocks that don't currently allow residential today. So, they're correcting that to allow for residential on Block 100, 400, and Fashion Island. And what this does is it allows the units to be more comprehensively planned. So, being able to plan for them on a larger scale allows for them to consider things like circulation, infrastructure, open space, and plan that on that larger scale. They're also seeking to add two parcels to the planned community that are currently zoned office regional at 100 and 190 Newport Center Drive. And I also like to note that there's no construction proposed at this time. Here's an exhibit showing the existing Block 100 today, and here's the two sites that would be added to the planned community as Irvine Company now owns these properties, so both 100 and 190 Newport Center Drive. There's some other proposed amendments to the planned community, and so I've highlighted a couple that I'm going to go into more detail, as I think these are really important to talk more about. However, I'm available if there are additional questions about the other items. So, first, height limits. There are certain areas of the planned community that currently do not have height limits for residential, so they want to include height limits for residential projects, and then also increasing them as well, and I'll go into more detail. Parking requirements, they're seeking to amend the parking requirements for residential slightly, but we still believe they're consistent, generally speaking, with the requirements that we have in the overlay and throughout the city. Also, some changes to sign standards. This is generally to reflect what's been built out there today, what has been approved through other comprehensive sign programs. And then, there's one piece that is unrelated to the residential, and that is a digital monument sign. And so, this is a sign that would allow for changeable copy, and it's electronic. So, it's not animation, it's not video, it's not flashing, it's not creating hazards, but it is something a little bit different than what's currently allowed. Also, making changes to open space. And so, that includes reducing the private open space requirement and then increasing the public, or I should say, common open space requirement in terms of the recreational amenities that are required. Also, the planned community already has some design standards, but the overlay projects, the housing overlay, with that approval, we also included objective design standards. So, we added a code section that would regulate design for these multifamily structures. And so, what we've done is asked the Irvine Company to include some of those objective design standards into the planned community, and they've done that, the key ones that we found to be most important. And then, lastly, also important, some changes to the procedural or the streamlining provisions of the planned community. And I'm going to dig into that a little bit more. So, this is, this piece right here, this is not changing as part of the planned community, but I think it's important to understand. And so, as I mentioned before, these projects that would come in under the housing overlay would be subject to planning commission review with a site development review. That would not be the case with these future housing projects. So, the existing planned community already allows for future development to go to the director, subject to two specific findings, and these are the findings that are different than our zoning code. So, first, that the proposed use or the development's consistent with the general plan, and then, two, that the proposed user development is consistent with the planned community, including the design regulations. This item is something that's changing. So, digging into this a little bit more, we're proposing some streamlining opportunities for traffic studies that are fairly straightforward. So, not all traffic studies would be able to be reviewed by the director or the city traffic engineer, but only certain traffic studies that meet the more straightforward findings, if you will. So, typically, the, under the traffic phasing ordinance, the traffic study, under all circumstances, would go to planning commission. In this case, it would go to the city traffic engineer or director. And so, the two findings where it would, the project would be eligible to go to that lower level of review would be if there's no impacts to the intersection, so very straightforward, or if there's no impacts after some circulation improvements that have been proposed and constructed. Going into the height changes here, so this exhibit, again, shows the planned community. And so, first, on the top of the screen is San Joaquin Plaza, and so there's one particular site at 800 San Clemente where the height would change from 65 feet to 85 feet. For Fashion Island, again, establishing a height limit for residential, and that would be 225 feet, where the commercial height is currently 125. Lastly, for Block 100, the existing height limit is 50 feet, and they're seeking a height amendment to 125 feet. And so, this may feel familiar to the commission, as the commission reviewed a similar amendment back in January to adjust the heights for the overlay projects. And so, this is similar, but slightly different and more catered to the planned community itself. And so, generally, the way that we think of it is if the projects go up, they don't go out. And what this does is allow for more space for view corridors, for open space, and generally just more opportunities for planning. And now, to the development agreement. So, since the applicant is seeking changes to the zoning code or the planned community, a development agreement is required. They currently have a development agreement that was approved in 2007 and then amended in 2012. So, this would be the third amendment. So, first, seeking to extend the term 10 years to 2042, and then, a public benefit fee would be paid $17,000 a unit for any units built after 2032. And you'll see in this slide, there are a couple dates referenced, and those are very intentional, because we want to ensure that the units are built so that we can get credit during this RENA cycle, during this housing cycle. Next would be a recreation and park fee of $34,000 a unit for 700 of the dwelling units. And then, a more unique one, offsite improvements. So, the Irvine Company will be tasked with developing a landscape and street master plan, and then also building the improvements identified in that plan. Development impact fees are not required based on when the applicant submitted their application. However, voluntarily paying those, so those are about $9 a square foot total in aggregate, those fees will go towards police, fire, recreation, sewer, and water. Additionally, very important, affordable housing. So, the applicant has committed to the construction of a 105-unit-at-minimum apartment project, and this apartment project would be affordable to very low and low-income households. To meet this provision, the applicant would be required to get an issued building permit by January 31st, 2029. And again, that's very intentional. And then, there would be a new affordable housing implementation plan to reflect this commitment. Additionally, in terms of SEQA. Additionally, in terms of SEQA, the city certified a program environmental impact report back when we did the housing overlays, and so that analyzed the environmental impacts of these housing opportunities. And so what the applicant has done is prepare a 15183 consistency analysis to demonstrate that this project is consistent with the prior program environmental impact report. And so that report and analysis was prepared by the applicant's consultant, and then we had our consultant, Kim Lee-Horn, who actually prepared the EIR, the program EIR, do a peer review. Next, kind of a unique component, a water supply assessment. So based on state law, the applicant's required to prepare a water supply assessment, because the project includes more than 500 residential dwelling units. And this was contemplated under the program EIR. It was understood that future projects, if they met this threshold, would prepare their own water supply assessments. So they prepared the report, and the utilities department has approved it. And ultimately, the conclusion states that adequate and reliable water supplies will be available to serve this project over the next 20 years. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this project with the items outlined here. And then in terms of next steps, that project does require review by the Airport Land Use Commission, so we're seeking an agenda date of March 20. And then city council hearings would follow in April. And with that, I'm available for any questions, and then the applicant does have a brief presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Harris?
On the the rec and park fee for 700 units, is that designated, which units, the first, the last, the middle, is it per 100?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So it said 700 of the 1,500 units have to pay the park rec fee, is that correct?
These are for the last of the units.
Yeah, the last of them.
Correct.
Thank you.
No other questions? I did have one quick question, and that was in regard to the public benefit fee. It's only applicable after 2032? Is that how I should read that?
That's correct. So for any units constructed after 2032, then that fee would be applicable.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any ex parte communication? I'll go headfirst, and I spoke with the applicant's representative.
I also spoke with the applicant's representative.
I did as well. I did as well.
Done for me. Okay, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Good evening, Chair Rosin, members of the commission. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, and I represent Irvine Company in this application to amend the North Newport Center Planned Community Development Plan. I'd like to thank city staff for working with us on this application. Newport Beach has incredibly knowledgeable and professional staff, and their input has made this project better. The North Newport Center Planned Community Text, or PC 56, was adopted in 2007, following the city's 2006 Comprehensive General Plan update, and it guides all Irvine Company planning in North Newport Center and the Fashion Island area. The PC is its own zoning document and includes land use, development regulations, development limits, site development standards, plan administration, and design regulations. The purpose of this PC amendment is to implement the city's housing element by allocating residential units to housing overlay sites within the North Newport Center PC. The PC amendment also brings in regulations from the city's zoning overlay to ensure compatibility and compliance with the city's newest standards. Finally, the PC amendment will ensure varying heights for a diverse range of product types and architecture consistent with city policies, and importantly, increased heights will allow for compliance with the city's minimum density requirements. The proposed height increases will apply to the housing overlay sites and is only for new residential development. From the initial planning of Newport Center in the 1960s, the vision for building heights has been to have the tallest buildings along San Joaquin Hills Road and surrounding the Ring Road, with heights gradually stepping down towards Coast Highway. In this exhibit, you see existing building heights in black. You can see the city's high-rise height limit of 300 feet kind of surrounding the Ring Road, with the North Newport Center PC height limit of 295 being the highest height. The proposed height increases are shown in white, and you see the city's zoning overlay height increases shown in blue, just for some context here. So you can see how really surrounding Fashion Island, it's all coming and stepping down towards Coast Highway. The amended development agreement, as staff referenced, will have a new tenure term and provide substantial benefits to the city, including a new $17,000-per-unit public benefit fee for units built after 2032 to incentivize construction as quickly as possible, a recreation and park fee of $34,000 per unit for 700 units, a landscape and street master plan in Newport Center valued at $17 million, payment of the city's new development impact fee for all units, and you may have heard staff reference, based on the timing of this application, that fee is not required, but it will be paid for all units, and the construction of a minimum of 105 affordable housing units in the low and very low-income categories, which is anticipated in this RENA cycle to make sure the city gets credit. And finally, payment of all other city development fair share fees for all units. Tonight, we request that the planning commission move forward with the staff recommendation, which is to recommend approval to the city council, and I'm available for any questions. I thank you very much.
Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Elmore?
I have a question. We had an agenda item in January that talked about the height overlay, and this wasn't included then. Why now? Why wasn't it included in the in our previous, when this was an agenda topic specifically for this?
Sure. So the North Newport Center PC is its own legislative zoning document. It stands apart from the city's zoning height document that you recently considered. Also, based on the timing of submitting of this application, we were working through those requests with city staff, as they were actively bringing to you the other height increases.
Increasing the height, while it benefits the applicant, can impair views from neighboring property owners. Views in our city, especially in the zone, are incredibly valuable. Has the applicant made all necessary outreach, and have they addressed the view impact for all the neighbors in this for the for this proposal, this application?
Well, Commissioner Elmore, we are not advancing any specific residential development projects tonight, but certainly Irvine Company has been doing extensive outreach with property owners in surrounding blocks in the nearby area for quite some time, and is committed to continuing to do that. I think we see the value of a height increase, as staff mentioned, which is to provide a skinnier, taller building with more opportunities for sites across, you know, across blocks, instead of kind of squatter wider buildings that could impact potentially more views.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Commissioner Harris?
I have one question. On the parking ratios, I think you're asking for a little bit of variance from in the past, it sounds like. Can you explain if they're, do they very much from what you on the Villas or at the Colony or those? Are they, what's the, what's the difference, or why do you need something separate?
We are proposing a different way to calculate the parking requirement, but it's actually, it's it's based on what we see at Villas of Fashion Island, based on that demand. And so it's just a more updated parking standard compared to how it was previously written. So we think it's it's actually an enhanced standard, and it's a little bit more parking than the city standard.
I'm sorry, I had one more question, that's it. The last one, the 225 feet, how how did the application or how the applicant derive at that number for that height increase around the mall? What's the impetus for that specific height increase?
Yeah, so that would be in the stepping down from what we see, the 295 height limit in the the higher blocks around San Joaquin Hills Road, and coming down through Fashion Island. That would give an opportunity to have, again, perhaps a taller building with less of a view impact, and also really, I think, keeping in mind the retail commercial center that is so important in Fashion Island, making sure that we're not impeding into that really critical retail core, that you can have great site planning and just some more flexibility, both for architecture and and what we see on the ground.
More of a flexibility issue. I see. Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on to, is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this item? Mr. Moser?
Chair Rosin, members of the commission, my name is Jim Moser, and there's more here than one can comment on in three minutes, but I would agree it is confusing that at your last meeting, we saw a map to be added to the zoning code that was supposedly the definitive height limits for the HO-4 overlay area. And on that map, it showed Fashion Island would be 125 feet. Tonight, we hear it will be 225. We heard that Block 100 was going to be 85 feet. Now it's going to be 125 feet. And actually, that recommendation of yours is still on its way to the Airport Land Use Commission, so they'll actually have two conflicting proposals before them on March That's a little disturbing, or at least confusing. Also, when you heard the previous item, which involved the city itself asking to reserve 199 units for the police station property, that required adding a footnote to Title 20, tabled in there, and I didn't see any change to Title 20, adding a footnote about this reservation of 1,500 units. That number also seems rather large. The Irvine Company and this planned community is not the only opportunity site, and when you add to their request for 1,500 and the city's request for 199, and you look at the applications that the city dashboard says are already pending, it leaves less than 100 of the overlay units for other possible applicants who might have even better proposals than Irvine Company has. And also, a issue that bothers me even more than that is the 100,000, 1,500 that they're asking to reserve is from a pool of units that was added to our general plan without a green light vote. As the city knows, that's, there's litigation about that underway. If that allocation of the pool turns out to be not legitimate, this development agreement that supposedly is vesting an interest in those illegitimate, possibly illegitimate units, seems to be really problematic to be assigning them and making them a vested interest, as the staff report says, for something that may not be valid. And then finally, I have not read all of this, there is too much to read, but I noticed on handwritten page 74, there's an extensive amendment that will apply to the buildings that have a greater than 30 dwelling unit per acre minimum base. This is on handwritten page 74. The proposal seems to be for a 20 dwelling unit per acre minimum, so I don't know who that applies to. I didn't find anything that was 30 dwelling units minimum. So, time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Joseph Larson, Rutana Tucker, representing the property owner at 180 Newport Center Drive. Just wanted to mention that our client has been in contact with the applicant. We have communicated with the city. We have, our, my client has certain property rights in in the subject property, understanding that the applicant has reached out to us and indicated a willingness to work with our client in maintaining those certain, those rights. At this time, they don't have any objection to the the proposed plan, and understanding that the no, no, no specific development is being proposed at this time. I understand that, and I want the city to be aware, that we'll continue to work with the city and the applicant to ensure that those, those, those designs and that the development is consistent with those, with those rights. And one of the things that were mentioned was view, and that is obviously something that our client is concerned about, but understanding that there's no, no proposed development at this time, and that we'll continue to work with the interested parties, we have no objection at this time, and look forward to working with the applicant and the city in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers on this item? Okay, seeing none. Does the staff have any comments? Oh, happens every time.
Hey, hi, I'm Mary Patterell. I know a couple of you, but anyhow, I've grown up in Newport Beach, Lincoln Elementary, Crandomar High School, my kids have the same thing. Anyhow, I've seen the Irvine Company progress in different areas, and they build a quality home. I don't know where we're supposed to put all these different housings that we're required to put in, and I think that it makes sense. I mean, with the dichotomy that's around us and the interfacing with Fashion Island with the housing and employment and restaurants and everything else, it's just going to make it pop. I just don't see any reason to have, I think Newport Center is actually a good location for it. I mean, the height restrictions, I get that, and hopefully, they're not impending, you know, they're not going to obstruct other people's visions, their views. But I say yes, go ahead and do Support 3, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chair Rosin and Planning Commissioners. My name is Megan Doyle, and I'm very proud to be a Newport Beach resident. Being a young professional in Orange County, finding housing is one of the biggest concerns all of my friends and I face. Finding it in Newport is almost impossible, but I am lucky enough to have bought a condo in the Newport Center area. I looked all over this community, and I really wanted to be near Newport Center. Being close to great shopping, great restaurants, and being able to walk there is incredible. I walk this area almost every weekend, and I can ride my bike to Babo Island and the beaches. It's the absolute perfect location and the perfect community. I think creating more housing in the Newport Center area is the most appropriate place for it. I know the state is mandating new housing, more than 4,000 new homes, and I think building new housing within Newport Center makes the most sense. While nobody wants to see a lot of growth in in new traffic, I realize that we need housing. I think with good planning and a good quality developer like the Irvine Company, I know this will be a beautiful new addition to the Newport Center. This plan builds homes in a location where there is proximity to jobs, shopping, and retail, and I think it's the best place for Newport Beach to grow. I respectfully request that you support plans for new housing by supporting the North Newport Center Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Staff, are there any comments for the record?
I'd like to provide a few additional comments on some of the items that were raised here. So first, the comment regarding the height overlay amendments that were recently approved and the differences between what's proposed in the planned community. So in an ideal world, sure, it would be nice if they were consistent, but in this case, we were processing them concurrently, and there are many standards in the overlay that are different than the planned community. And so with, if this project is adopted, then we will no longer be looking at the overlay for any of those development standards. We will be simply looking at the planned community for the development standards there. Additionally, in in terms of the city reserving 199 units in a footnote, identifying that in the overlay is also not required for this project, as these entitlements would vest those rights and would be identified in a different zoning document, so we don't have to go back and amend the other zoning document, the overlay. Additionally, the comments regarding the 30-plus minimum base density, those are additional standards that are really appropriate for more dense projects, a different type of product. Usually, the product that's 20 units an acre is more like a townhome, and so some of the provisions don't necessarily make sense for the lower-density products. So that's why it's been broken up into a separate section with just a few additional requirements related to lobbies and things like that nature.
Okay. Thank you for that. Then- Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action. Commissioners?
I'll start it off. I follow this organization's my professional career, and I've seen quite a bit of investment by the organization, but as far back as I can really remember, I've seen those investments in Irvine and Santa Clara and San Diego and, and not as much in Newport that I can really recall in quite some time. So I'm, I'm supportive of this application. I, I, I welcome the reinvestment back into Newport Beach by the organization. I think it's going to improve and, and, and modernize and continue to keep our city in a position that it has always been, which I think is, is a leader in, in this economy and this, in, in our, in our county. And so I'm, I'm supportive of this. I'm happy to see the reinvestment back into Newport Beach, and I look forward for more reinvestment back into Newport Beach.
Any other comments?
Yeah, like my colleague here, I agree. I think Irvine Company always does such a great product that I've seen and will do a really nice job here, and I'm supportive of this. I had a lot of, lot of things to cover in this, in this, on this one, but I went through it and most of my questions were answered. The one question I have is, and it kind of just came here recently while, while, while the presentation here, on the PC 56, I should have pulled this up over the last few days when I was reviewing this. So, does that, in PC 56, is, is basically all construction approvals? Is it administrative then? It doesn't go through the planning commission body or, or the city council?
That's correct, unless it is appealed.
Unless it's appealed. Okay. That was my question there. And then the question about if, on some of the litigation that's floating around, if, if that does change things and they say they get their vesting here, does that just event, if, if it, I guess if the, if, if things change and, and it doesn't match up with what's, what we approve here tonight or not approve here tonight, does, or at least if we approve something here tonight, does that just, maybe this is a question for Elon, does it just negate what we do here? Do you come back and kind of just figure, figure things out in respect to if there is a decision made that's, that, that doesn't go along with what we do here tonight? Just basically kind of figuring out what would the back and forth would be if, if, if things change?
Thank you, Commissioner Lowry. The applicant does not have any specific projects at this time. The city does not have any order from any court prohibiting us from moving forward with the implementation of the housing element. That said, you know, the applicant is required to indemnify and defend the city, and so if in the event, we feel confident in our position, but if that did occur, it would be incumbent upon the applicant to indemnify and defend the city.
That's where I was going. Thank you.
Okay, and then just to follow up with Commissioner Lowry's comments in regard to the administrative approval process, this could be, if there was some, if a future project was brought forward and it could be still called up to the planning commission or to city council, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
However, the findings would be the findings that are within the planned community.
Got it. Okay, but it still could be called up if necessary. It's not final or appealable. There's also that provision as well. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Harris?
I, although I was a little bit thrown off by the conflict between the overlay and the plan on the heights, I do kind of follow in, my other commissioners here, think this area aligns with long-term vision of growth. We have to put them somewhere, and this seems to be a very good location with obviously a very qualified builder. So, I'll be supportive and I would actually, unless you guys wanted to say something, make it a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Go ahead and call for a vote. Congratulations to the applicant. Should I go back and? Our next item is item number four. This is the general plan annual progress report, PA 2025-008, and site location is citywide. This item is a discussion item and not a public hearing, and we'll be asking for, but we will be asking for public comments. So, does staff have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening. Chairman Rosin, commissioners, Melinda Wayland, Planning Division. So this is a state mandated annual report, reporting on general plan activities for 2024. And the report follows the latest state guidance and includes a very detailed report on all of the implementation programs in the current general plan. And many of those have been completed since the last update of the general plan in 2006, and many are ongoing maintenance and provide highlights of implementation. There's also a housing element portion, which includes all of the policies and actions on all of the housing element, policy actions, and also includes data required by the Department of Housing and Community Development for all housing produced in the calendar year 2024. And the report is required to be submitted to the state by April 1st of every year. So, as you know, we are in a comprehensive general plan update, and we're currently in phase two. Phase one and phase two outreach have been completed. And then jumping into the housing, housing element portion, which includes data on production of housing. It includes the all units approved with entitlements, building permits issued, and permits finalled for housing units. The building permits issued is important because these are the units that contribute towards our RENA, our Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And as you can see, the majority of the lower income and moderate income units are from accessory dwelling units. So for the 2024, we have a total of 81 units that contributed to RENA, and these are net increase in units. So if a project is a one-for-one replacement or two-for-two, they don't count towards RENA, it's only a net increase. And we have several housing projects that are highlighted in the report, and these are two of them that are currently in plan check, the residences at 1401 Quail Street and the residences at Newport Airport Village. And also highlighting policy actions from the housing element, the approval of the housing overlays and the objective design standards. And city council has also authorized the local coastal program amendment for the coastal properties within the housing overlays. And then another highlight, what is the accessory dwelling unit programs? And like I said before, these had significant contribution to the RENA. And there was also a new SAFE ADU program implemented, which allows unpermitted units to apply under accessory dwelling units. And they also are provided zoning code concessions. And the fee waiver program was extended through 2024 for accessory dwelling units. Another highlight is the assistance provided to the unhoused in 2024. The emergency be well OC services provided transports to services to over 300 people and connected individuals to resources and permanently housed five individuals. Additionally, the police department assigned, reassigned three officers to be housing legs, or homeless liaison officers. And that completes my overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, we're asking the planning commission to forward this on to city council and then to be submitted to the state. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, any questions, the staff? Okay, seeing none. I guess we're, are we asking for ex parte communication here, or?
It is not necessary.
Is it? Okay, thank you. I didn't think so.
Talk to Jaime.
All right, we'll move on to public comments. Are there any, anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this item?
Chair Rosin, members of the commission, as you've probably learned by now, my name is Jim Mosher. We heard in the presentation about the general plan update, and I should have mentioned perhaps earlier that I am recently reappointed to the general plan citizens advisory committee, but I am speaking here as an individual. And in that connection, I would say that one of the accomplishments mentioned in the written report is that the city during the last calendar year completed its rezoning for the, without a green light vote, addition of housing units for the six-cycle RENA, which I thought was true, but then I'm a little confused because I think we heard in the previous item tonight that the zoning is not actually completed until the planned communities are amended, and there are many of those, I believe, that have housing opportunity sites in them. And our municipal code says that the, as you heard tonight, that the planned community text overrides the allotments that are in the zoning code. So it's a little confusing whether the rezoning has actually been completed or all of the PCs have to be revised, as you were doing with the other one tonight. And in that connection, I wanted to mention, and as you know and as referenced in here, in addition to the written report, there are spreadsheets, which Melinda posts, and in those, it gives more detail on the projects that are being proposed. And in those spreadsheets, I noticed there are at least, somewhat contrary to what we just heard, there are at least two preliminary applications for specific Irvine Company projects. In the PC 26, one of them is PA 2024-170 and -171. One is for 200 units to be built at 800 San Clemente in the San Joaquin Plaza. The other is for 600 units to be built to those two properties being added, 10190 Newport Center. The reason they're not mentioned in the staff report is they're not offering any affordable housing in those. And I did want to mention, as the progress towards the RENA, when you add up everything in those spreadsheets, it appears that we already have something like 5,720 units proposed. Of those, only 87 are in the moderate income category, where our requirement is to build So if it takes more than 5,000 to produce 87, it's going to take something like 69,000 units to meet our moderate income quota. And you may have noticed tonight, Irvine Company is not offering to use its allocation for any moderate income units. So we have a problem there. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none. Staff, any comments?
So, just real quick, Chair Rosin, so the city is not obligated to build anything. The city's obligated to plan for housing, and that's what we've done. And after that, you have to let the private markets dictate how the housing gets built because of high interest rates, construction costs, labor costs. As all of you know, it's very, very, very expensive to do this. So we've provided the tools, the planning documents, and the legislative actions that are all in place. And now we have to let the private markets kind of dictate kind of how this all gets rolled out.
Great, thank you very much. Then we'll go ahead and bring this back to the commission to have a discussion and maybe, and make a recommendation.
Do we vote on this, or just?
I think it's a support.
Is that enough?
Thumbs up.
Can we, can we see, just a show of hands, please?
Show of hands?
Support?
Support.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then we will move to the next item, which are staff and commissioner items. Motion for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? All right, seeing none. And item six is a report by the community development director.
Good evening. Jaime Muriel, deputy director. I just want to note that the March 20th planning commission meeting would be canceled. We don't have any items lined up, and it's looking like April 3rd would likely be canceled as well.
Wow. April 3rd is canceled as well?
Yes. Commissioner Harris?
Any update on the LCP amendment from coastal? Are we still waiting? Isn't that incoming soon?
With regards to the LCP amendment related to the housing element opportunity overlay to be incorporated within our LCP, there is an item on the next coastal commission agenda. They're asking for a one-year extension. However, based on my conversations with coastal commission staff, they do realize it's a priority for the city to get that adopted quickly, and so they believe that would likely be heard at a summer hearing, so this year.
Thank you for that. Does anyone from the audience wish to comment on this? All right. Seeing none. Next item, our requests for excused absences. Are there any requests for excused absences? All right, seeing none. With that, we are adjourned. All right.